Good evening, everyone. A really, really exciting honoring excellence here this evening. We're going to kick it off here in just a moment by recognizing four exceptional students in a program that is now off the ground and a lot of work is taking place. And I'll let Dr. Vogel talk a little bit about that and get that underway in just a moment. We also have our Support Employee of the Year here, our Teacher of the Year here. And if that's not good enough, we have the Missouri State Nurse of the Year in this room here this evening. So, a huge night. So, I mentioned, we're going to kick things off with presenting four students with some recognition. And some of you may have, many of you, all of you in this room have heard about the Grow Your Own Teacher Program that has been those ongoing efforts over the course of the last few years. I know conversations. And I mentioned Dr. Vogel, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. He's going to come up and would you like to just talk from the table there about the program?
Yeah. And just by way of brief introduction, I really want to give the floor over to Mr. Rosecrans, Director of Human Resources, and to Dr. Dixon Sehorn, who's our Executive Director of Elementary Ed. They functioned as the Steering Committee co-chairs in this effort. But, as you know, you've heard me say many times, we've got a teacher shortage nationally. And probably about four or five years ago, the state of Missouri really started looking at tackling this problem. Andrea Dixon Sehorn was one of the state's leaders, really leading the charge on addressing this teacher shortage issue on behalf of the Commissioner. And the fruits of that were to bring together people from higher ed and from public education institutions to gather around and try to come up with a model plan for the state to begin seeing implemented across Missouri. In fact, one of the attachments on there for you to look at is a byproduct of that in December of 2016, the work that she did on behalf of the Commissioner. And I just want to point out, on that list, you see a lot of school districts and institutions of higher education, but you only see one suburban school district, and that's Liberty Public Schools. I think it's important to note, we're a very innovative school district technologically. We're innovative in terms of project-based learning, but we're also innovative in getting out ahead of problems that face our profession. And one of those is the teacher shortage area. So, the byproduct of that work and the fruition of the time since then is the Grow Your Own Teacher Program here. As I mentioned, Dee Rosecrans and Andrea Dixon Sehorn really functioned as a chair for that Steering Committee. Members of that Steering Committee are Bridget Herman, who had a prior engagement, and Edward Tate, who had a prior engagement. These are Liberty High School Assistant Principals, but also Dr. Precious Kirth, who's the principal, upcoming principal of Liberty North High School, and Rosemary Camp, who, Dr. Camp is one of the Assistant Principals there at North. And they served on this Steering Committee to try to find this next generation of teachers among our high school students to award Grow Your Own Teacher incentive program for them to go out and pursue education and come back and teach in our school system. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Rosecrans and Dr. Dixon Sehorn to talk briefly about that process and then honor the kids who are the result of that year's labor.
I've asked our two other Steering Committee members to just come and stand with us because this work cannot be done alone. It is a collective collaborative process. So, you can see Dr. Rosemary and Dr. Precious up here with us. So, we just want to say again, thank you for believing in us and for endorsing this endeavor of Grow Your Own Teachers. As you know, we have stepped into unknown territory with this in that we knew we wanted to focus on diversifying our staff here in Liberty Public Schools. And so, we're very excited about this inaugural cohort of four students. I'm not going to give things away, but three of them are from Liberty North High School and one is from Liberty High School. They were vetted through a very thorough process. As you know, when we came to you initially, we told you that they would have to be a good citizen, they would have to submit a written essay, they would have to provide three letters of recommendation. They all did that. They completed an online application as if they were applying for employment here in Liberty Public Schools. And they also participated in face-to-face interview with all of us and then two others. So, that's no small feat for a high school student to have to sit before six or seven adults and talk about why they believe they have what it takes to be an aspiring teacher. So, I'm going to hand it over very briefly to Dee, who will just share with you the monetary aspect of this award that we're talking about tonight.
Before Dallas formally introduces our four students, let me give you the bottom line for me, in addition to these four quality candidates. Each of these future teachers will receive scholarships of $2,500 annually, up to four years, and they can use that money to defray partially the cost of going to the university or to a college. So, whether that's towards tuition, books, fees, however they choose to use that. The funds are refundable, are renewable for a period of up to four years. We hope they will graduate in four years. That's part of the deal. And in exchange for those scholarship funds, they must satisfy all the requirements of a teacher agreement, Grow Your Own Teacher Agreement that we have drafted, and I will get to them and their parents later. The bottom line is this, after graduation, I just get chills saying this, these four students will come back and work for Liberty Public Schools as full-time teachers. And so, Dallas, would you like to introduce them forward?
Yes. Get the fun part. Would you guys like to take the certificates? Savannah Hinton, would you please come forward? From Liberty North High School, I'll read a little bit about Savannah. Savannah feels she is a qualified candidate because of her extensive classroom experience, which started with arts integration with Mrs. Linger last year. And this is where she developed the idea that teaching might be a fun career. Then she got to be a part of the EIP program, and she has seen different age groups and has worked with younger band students. Savannah feels well-rounded with different experiences with younger students in classrooms. Savannah Hinton, Liberty North High School. Congratulations. Leslie Paredes Nunez, from Liberty North High School. Leslie is also a part of the EIP program as a senior and goes to Heritage Middle School to help with the ELL program. She wants to go to Emporia State University. What is their mascot? The Hornet. And major in chemistry education with a minor in Spanish as a world language. Leslie Paredes Nunez. Congratulations. Whitley is an early graduate who is currently enrolled at Maple Woods Community College. She has worked at Kelly Brook in kindergarten as a participant in the EIP program last semester. From the start of her school career, Whitley has worked extremely hard to be the best student she can be and has asked for extra help and feels like an aspiring teacher. She will be able to help each student be the best they can be. Whitley Peptonk, Liberty North High School. And, from Liberty High School, Liam Arcega. Liam desires to become a history teacher. His perspective is that history is a subject that is often overlooked and that a lot of lessons can be learned from studying history. Human behavior, leaders in politics, and knowing history is pivotal to everyone's education. Liam wants to be out in front, leading people, and believes that being a teacher is really great as you're influencing the next generation on how to face the world. From Liam's perspective, quote, "Teachers are very impressionable, especially in high school where a lot of people are solidifying their identity. Teaching is the most noble work." I think a lot of people in this room would agree with that. So, definitely, last but certainly not least, Liam Arcega from Liberty High School. So, thank you to that group for all of their great work here as it's ramped up here the last few months.
And if I could just say too, thank you for believing in this vision. It was a year ago that you got behind this idea when Dee and Andrea first presented it, and appreciate your support and forward thinking in this regard.
So, moving on, we want to also recognize tonight formally, introduced to the board, some individuals I'm sure you have seen on Twitter, on Facebook, on our website the last several weeks. I want to begin with our, the reigning Missouri School Nurse of the Year. That would be Ms. Kristen Redman. Why don't you come on up here, Nurse Redman? Shoal Creek Elementary Nurse Kristen Redman was introduced as the Missouri Association of School Nurses, School Nurse of the Year at the Association's annual luncheon back on Saturday, April 6th, 2019. Quoting LPS Director of Health Services Kathy Ellermeyer, "Kristen has contributed to the success of our team by her leadership and being a resource and mentor for others and by her outstanding expertise as a professional school nurse. Kristen has won the hearts of countless students, parents, and coworkers over the past 14 years, and it's an honor to serve alongside her." You know Kathy Ellermeyer is here with us tonight. Thank you for being here. Also Shoal Creek Principal Kristi Bowman and her team in the back. I know she also has some colleagues here with us tonight. Anyone, you've brought the boys with you too, didn't you?
I did. I'm honored to be, as supported by my son, Kristin Redman, a Liberty graduate, and by my wife, John Redman, a Liberty North graduate.
Fantastic.
I'm very excited. I have the Lornoy family and their two daughters. I brought a whole crew.
You did.
Sally Henry, Shannon Fletcher.
Well-deserved recognition. She is fantastic, as I know most everyone in this room that knows her would agree with that. So, let's give her a big round of applause. Moving along, I'd like to introduce Ms. Cindy Pipes. Cindy, would you join me here at the podium? This seems like it was just like last week. It's been several weeks ago. It was an exciting morning at South Valley Middle School on Wednesday, April 17th of 2019, as Liberty Public Schools announced the 2019-2020 Support Employee of the Year. This year's distinction belongs to longtime LPS custodian Ms. Cindy Pipes. Ms. Pipes has served Liberty Public Schools for 18 years. She has been at South Valley Middle School since the building opened 15 years ago. During this span, she has become a staple at the building and gained incredible admiration from her colleagues, families, and students alike. We feel that this Ms. Pipes is a phenomenal representation of this award, and we congratulate her. What a great photo there. That was a fun morning. I introduce the 2019-2020 LPS Support Employee of the Year, Ms. Cindy Pipes. Would you like to share anything, Ms. Pipes? You were very quick to have a seat.
It's been just a year. No, it's just still a total shock.
I need to give her an award. Congratulations. And we'll talk about that convocation speech in front of 1,200 staff in August. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Want to thank Jill Mullen, the Principal at South Valley, for being here and supporting her this evening. Well-deserved. Congratulations, Cindy. Deb Kaywood, come on up. I think it was less than a week after we recognized Ms. Cindy, we showed up at Epic for a surprise assembly, and it was a lot of fun. I'll read the release. "In a surprise all-school assembly, Epic Elementary 5th Grade Teacher Deb Kaywood was announced as the 2019-2020 LPS District Teacher of the Year on Friday morning, April 19. Ms. Kaywood has served as a teacher for 22 years, the past five serving as a 5th Grade Teacher at Epic Elementary. She has taught in LPS since August of 2008, serving as a 5th Grade Teacher at Alexander Donovan and Shoal Creek prior to coming to Epic. Parents of children that have been under Kaywood's guidance also point to the many unique learning opportunities she offers her students, including a classroom garden that supports a community hunger initiative along with a global cardboard challenge in which students create projects with proceeds used to support charities." Well-deserved honor, the 2019-2020 Liberty Public Schools District Teacher of the Year, Ms. Deb Kaywood.
So, I'm taking advantage of being able to say something more articulate than during the surprise assembly where I just said, "I love teaching," about 20 times, as I was blubbering. So, every day, there are children who sit at tables and desks in classrooms that feel in many ways invisible. There are things going on in their hearts and heads and homes that no one knows, and they feel alone. But then they're noticed by someone who pours into them, encourages them, believes in them, even when they can't yet believe in themselves. They push them and let them see themselves in a way that they never thought possible. That's the impact on the teacher. There were educators like that at every stage of my life who had their fingerprints on my journey to becoming what I was meant to be and perhaps even swinging the trajectory of my life. When it was time to decide what I wanted to do for a career, teaching was a natural choice for me. Little did I know that being a teacher would be more than what I do. It's really who I am. I believe that a teacher who cares and is passionate about their students and their mission to educate and train up the next generation of leaders is irreplaceable in the life of a child. What one teacher totally sold out to his or her students can cause is a ripple effect that will continue far beyond the year that they have with that child in their classroom. In fact, I'll tell you that one of the biggest honors of receiving this award has been the opportunity to hear from past students and hear how their lives have been impacted by something that was said or done while they run our class. I heard from a boy who's now a man who was in my very first class in Crowley, Texas almost 30 years ago. He offered congratulations and then asked if I still had a copy of the video we made almost 30 years ago of explorers coming to America where we all dressed up in clothes I found at the Salvation Army and videotaped with one of those monster video cameras that somehow I convinced my principal to go and borrow from high school. Or there's a mom who tells me that her son, who had never been to a class party before 5th grade because of feeling so anxious, is now living vibrantly and successfully in middle school. Or a card with a sweet note from a mom of a girl I tutored from the time she was in kindergarten all the way through 6th grade, who couldn't read before 3rd grade due to a learning disability, who just won a reading award at her school in another state. Or getting a Facebook post from a previous student that said that she's studying to become a teacher now because I saw in her who she was and believed in her. It's all these moments and a million more that come together to form a picture of why I love what I do so much. Every day, my students impact me far more than I could ever think of impacting them. Education is changing, and it really is time. I love the privilege that Liberty Public Schools has given me to be a leader in the trenches. I'm honored to be a part of a wonderful place like Epic Elementary and live by the principle that you can't drive change sitting in the passenger seats. Even after 22 years in full-time teaching, I still love to learn and grow and impact. Liberty has allowed me that ability, and I'm grateful to the people in this district that have stood beside me and once again believed in me, pushed me, and allowed me to nurture my need to lead while also staying in the classroom. You've let me be a voice for risk-taking and innovation and have let me have a passion for showing that the role of a teacher is just as critical as it was when I was that little girl. Some of our job descriptions have changed, but we're still the ones that stand in the gap for kids, where we teach them to think and communicate and accept themselves and accept others. Those things have not changed. When they surprised me in April, all I could think of to say was that I love what I do. Now that I've had time to reflect, I think I'd probably still say the same thing. I love what I do, and I'm so grateful for those who believe in me, and I consider this to be a true blessing and honor of mine.
I need to also mention that just, I think, a few days after she was announced as our District Teacher of the Year, she was awarded the Northland Chamber of Banquet Excellence in Education Christa McCullough Award over at the KCI Expo Center, which was a huge deal. The first time Liberty Public Schools has had a teacher presented with that award in, I think, over a dozen years. So, I think I, Deb, I emailed you a few days after that, or maybe the next day, and just said, "Go ahead and have a week, Deb Kaywood." That was a week. That was a week. And she will now move on and represent us at the regional and state level, and she is going to have a tremendous opportunity to continue on in this process. And what I quickly learned also is she is a very competitive person. So, my guess is she's going to be right there until the end. So, great night of honoring excellence. Again, thanks for everyone being here this evening, and that will conclude it for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dallas. So, if our honorees could stick around, we'll take a break in a few minutes so we can all come out and personally congratulate you and meet you. We've got a couple items of business. First, we've got 2.03 approval of the agenda.
I move the board adopt the agenda as presented.
Any discussion on the agenda? Roll call, please.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Machine carries.
Okay, we're going to take a break now, and when we come back, we will be at the public comment. And if anyone is here that wants to address the board, blue cards on the table right outside that door, fill one out and give it to either Dr. Tucker or myself or another board member. We've got one. If we have any others, then make sure everybody gets their turn to address the board when we come back at 7:35. Yeah, seven thirty-five. Anyone else? Any? Anyone else? Okay. So, people addressing the board will be asked to not repeat what someone else before has said. Since there's only one blue card, I think that's just matters to them. Persons wishing to address any subject concerning Liberty Public Schools and our education may be so at the podium. Persons addressing the board are asked to keep their remarks concise and to the point. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. A person or persons may speak only once at the meeting. Concerns brought forward during public comment may be addressed by the superintendent or appropriate staff members, usually within a week. So, at this time then, I would like Ms. Sarah Rotert. Can I say that right? To the podium.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Sarah Rotert. I am an LHS graduate and a current parent to four students in the district. I appreciate this opportunity to stand before you and ask your support to enhance learning opportunities for all students in the district. These thoughts are not new, but are critical as the district is transforming the high school experience. Before you, you have the printed copy of my letter in its entirety, as well as one document of research. The letter in its entirety has links to multiple resources and research. For the sake of time, I will only be reading parts of my letter. Some students across the country are separated from their neighborhood elementary, middle, and high schools. These students have reduced access to general education content and may also have an alternative set of standards to graduate from high school. The commonality these students share is one of an intellectual disability. Due to the nature of the system as a whole, multiple opportunities are stolen. Opportunities to learn are being denied, depriving students the chance to learn, study, fail, persevere, and create meaningful connections to all of their peers. You rob the general education student population of the chance to see possibility, worthiness, and community. You rob our community of seeing value if you are perceived as different or less than. You are stealing the foundation of a sense of belonging. This theft is irreversible. High school itself is a small window of time. As it is now, you are not preparing our kids for competitive integrative work. You are putting students into a box, ignoring thirty years of research and best practices. This program, as it is implemented, is segregation. You are systematically failing the students and community. You are stealing greatness. How is anyone expected to thrive if we deprive from those who are already most vulnerable? As we move the education design out of the industrial age and into the information age, we must also design a system that supports all students and all teachers. We know the job industry climate is changing. We know there is overwhelming statistics of individuals with cognitive disabilities who want to work but don't have the opportunity or network to support them in this endeavor. We have more information readily available to us now than ever before. Organizations like Cast and Swift already have the framework. Dr. Schwartz, Costin, and Jorgensen are just a few of the consultants working with school districts across the nation to create inclusive educational opportunities. Researchers repeatedly show the importance of inclusion as the LA Unified School District states. Although it was once believed that students with disabilities should be taught together in a separate setting apart from other children, we now know that all students benefit when all students are educated together in integrated classrooms and schools. This change is happening here, across the country. I implore you, this change needs to happen here and now. I am seeking the support from the board to continue this conversation, collaborate, and provide necessary training to create opportunities for students and staff to reach their full potential in a learner-centered environment as found on the Academic Services tab on the LPS website, and to align with the mission statement of LPS to inspire and equip all learners to discover their voice and unlimited potential.
Thank you. And now brings us to our consent agenda. In our applicable parliamentary procedure, Robert's rule provides for consent agenda listing several items approved by the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to ensure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member.
I move the board approve Consent Agenda items 3.01 through 6.04.
Question?
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
This is all the way to 7.01, Policy Revision.
So, you have several items that are listed there below that are presented to you this evening for first read as it relates to Missouri School Board Association policies. We will bring this back, these back to you at our regular monthly meeting in June. That'll give us opportunities, administration, to comb through them, but then also for you all to take a look and let us know if you have any questions, if any clarification can be provided between now and our June meeting. So, we'll just share those to you at this time for a review.
Questions tonight?
So, then similarly, you have a list of a few procedures that are being presented to you for information purpose. There is one that we are going to consider deleting and that is DG-AP1. The other three are just for your awareness this evening. So, this particular agenda item is a continuation of a conversation we've been having this spring. We've provided with you the findings of Team Liberty's work, as well as the AdSA Administrative Salary and Welfare Committee work this spring. Appreciate Dr. Vogelar, as well as Cindy Sullivan, working very closely with those two groups in an effort to look at where we're at and what we're able to do as it relates to salary and benefits and the welfare of our employees. With that said, we shared with you this document that overviews the recommendations that have come from Team Liberty. I want to highlight a couple of items. First and foremost, at an estimated cost of $1,329,689, being able to fund all salary schedules, including vertical steps and horizontal movements. As you will note, we did conduct a CBIZ salary study. Over the course of this year, we've done that several times. Usually, it's every three years or so in which we're looking comprehensively at our salaries and where we stand in comparison to our peer groups and others. Knowing that this was a fairly significant task, in talking with Team Liberty and AdSA, it was agreed upon, given the magnitude of the entire recommendation in full, to be able to phase it in over several years. And so, in looking at this first phase, a couple items to make note of. Enhancing certified, classified, professional, technical, and administrator salary schedules by the tune of 2%. Initiating the first year before your phase-in column movements on all schedules. And you can see the attached documents, with the exception of the administrative schedule, that's to be phased in at a later date. Eliminating stages of longevity stipends to the administrator's schedule and folding in stage across all grades except column M-13. And then the final piece of that phase is, in cases where CBIZ recommended greater than 2% on a schedule, remaining recommendations phased in in FY '21. That phase-in portion is $2,174,592. Couple other notable items related to the recommendation. Eliminating the education specialist stipend on administrative schedules and replacing it with a separate designated column, MA+30. That takes that to $30,000 as an anticipated cost. Holding harmless those employees that could have lost the one-time $1,500 enhancement that was provided for in fiscal year nineteen. That is minimal at $2,835. And then, as it relates to extra-duty schedules, stipends, holding on that at this point, but then looking at further study during FY '20. Obviously, that comes at no cost. So, in capturing all of that together, the total estimated cost for the recommendations this evening is $3,537,116 as it relates to the work of Team Liberty and AdSA. That said, Dr. Vogelar, Ms. Sullivan, anything that you'd like to add in and around the salary recommendations?
Nothing to add. That covers it.
Cindy, nothing to add?
This is what we reviewed last month.
That's correct.
I move the board adopt the 2019-2020 salary recommendations and compensation plans as presented.
Back in.
AJ?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Another ongoing conversation that has been taking place this spring has been the budget preparation process for FY '20. And so, appreciate Cindy and her team, as well as all of our principals and directors. There are a lot of people that have input in the budget process. You'll recall from several years ago, we transitioned to a zero-based budgeting process. Really, it's somewhat of a hybrid, really, as we've done that the last couple of years. But looking at our revenue projections back in March, looking at our expenditures in April, knowing that we would bring a draft budget document to you in the month of May, that's our purpose in being here this evening, turning the podium over to Ms. Cindy Sullivan to share a little bit of an update.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. Most of this is a repeat to you, as Dr. Tucker indicated, you have heard this in March and April, so we're going to just highlight the changes from the current year so that you will know where we stand with our budget for FY '20 that is proposed. The first thing, I just wanted to point out that we are required statutorily to include several items in our budget document, and that is related to Board Policy DB. And we go over these every year to make sure that they are included in our budget so that we are statutorily in compliance. So, those are all listed there. You can find all of them in the budget document. We're going to start tonight probably about operating funds. And here is the operating funds projection. So, you will see that operating funds are fairly consistent percentage-wise with that of the current year. They did increase by 2.35 million in total, and we'll talk about which things increase and decrease as we go along here. And you will note, as always, that we are heavily reliant on local funds and state funds to fund our operations of the district. Our operating fund revenues, primary changes this year came in the form of local tax revenue increases, Prop C, sales tax increases, pilot payment increases, and state basic formula Classroom Trust Fund. Local tax revenue is dependent upon the levy and the increase in the assessed valuation. Prop C is the sales tax that are spent here in Clay County in the Liberty School District. That's a license sales tax. Pilot payments are the payments in lieu of taxes on TIFT properties in the Shaw Creek Valley area. They increase in AV along with every other dollar of property in Clay County. And then, the state basic formula on Classroom Trust Fund are dependent on the SAT, the State Equity Target, and the Classroom Trust Fund, and student growth for all of those. We did have two decreases in revenue. One is grant revenue, and that was significant in the fact that it was the Children's Services Fund revenue of $900,000 and the Coffin Grant of another $100,000. Now, we anticipate that we could receive more money from both of those again this year, but we do not know. So, at this time, they are not included in the budget and it was decreased from the current year by $1 million to account for that revenue from next year. So, when we do receive those grants again, the budget will be amended to an increase for the revenue and expenditure to go along with those. Also, our federal title program revenue did decrease this year, and that is due to a decline in the district's census poverty that is provided by the United States Department of Education. So, there's a formula that's calculated by the U.S. Department of Education that figures what our funds are. And when you drop below 5% census poverty, then your funds are decreased. It drops to 4.91%. So, we took a decline in those funds. In those funds, there is a chance always how they calculate it in the future years, we will grow back up above five percent and receive a higher allocation in future years. We did ask Desi-
Did the formula change?
I'm sorry?
Did the formula change?
The formula? No.
The calculation changed?
Did not. We had them check the numbers because we were really-
That doesn't sound right.
-found that hard to believe as well. And they did go back and check, and Desi talked with the person that's in charge of that at the U.S. Department of Ed, and we were able to bump one of our numbers up to get us closer to the five percent. We were lower than the four point nine one initially, but we bumped it just up to four point nine one percent. So we did dig into that a little bit. Dr. Meisenheimer talked at length with Desi because it was odd to them that increase as well. So we'll keep an eye out for that, and that's based on accounts that we provide, and we did check all of those numbers and couldn't find anything to disagree with. So unfortunately, we'll lose a little bit of money there. Hopefully, we'll gain it back, though. Just a couple of things to remind you where and why and how we did these basic formula funds and what our assumptions are based on. You've seen this before, as I said. We are budgeting on the state classroom, the basic formula classroom trust fund on full funding this year. On Friday, the legislature did approve the governor's recommendation to, again, fully fund the formula. And as we've had that conversation, full funding is not really fully funding, but they call it fully funding. So we've talked about the glass half full and glass half empty.
So what is our actual cost per student currently?
I would have to look.
Approximately?
We spend around twelve thousand dollars per student, and then when you look on the ASBR, it's a little bit less because of the way they figure it on the ASBR pulls out certain things, so.
And that's lower than most districts-
Yes.
...in our area?
Yeah.
And the state funds sixty-three hundred?
The state funds, the SAT is sixty-three, seventy-five. Now, of that number, you have to pull out local effort, so it really drops state funding per child down to a little over four thousand dollars per student.
So a third of what it actually costs. I just think it's really important for anyone who might be watching from home to understand that.
Percentage-wise, as far as state funding versus the rest, what's our percentage number as against federal versus state?
Percentage of-
A revenue.
Forty percent versus fifty percent local. So we, the city of Liberty School District patrons share a bigger load of our cost than the state-
Right.
...and the federal government and the county.
Right. So I just think when we talk about full funding-
Yes.
...that it's important to just say. It really costs about twelve thousand dollars?
Correct.
And we don't get anywhere near that.
And the state equity target, it's the minimum, minimum-
Right.
...per student targeted amount to invest in student education. So we greatly exceed the minimum that is required to put into quality education per The basic formula is also projected this year based on student growth. This is based on the latest Demographer data of a hundred and fifty students added. What is not included here would be any growth received in the free school program that we will be adding this fall. That number has not been included in the projection. Once we have our September account, and we have those students enrolled and attending the free school, we will recalculate that estimated quota and submit that to the state, and that will also increase our formula payment based on the number of students that are enrolled there. Also, we will be relooking at this Demographer information this fall, getting a refresh of that data, so we may have additional information to protect for future years going forward with this data as well.
Do we have an estimate of how many schools will be coming into early childhood?
We are planning for forty. Do you have any other estimates?
Forty.
Forty. Two classrooms. Two classrooms. So we anticipate we can fill that. That's why we have two classrooms at that time. And what will happen there is our district attendance, average attendance rate is a little above ninety-four percent, so those forty kids will be added to the student count and multiplied by the attendance percentage added then to create our weighted average daily attendance, which is what will pay down on the basic formula. Any other questions? So local tax revenue, which is, as we indicated, the great source of revenue for our operating budget. We are anticipating a one point one trillion million dollars increase in that revenue this year. That is based on the information and a relatively conservative projection based on growth. We know it's a reassessment year, and we know that, we have heard that the city of Liberty and the county of Clay have increased, it's Clay County, not the city actually, to mistake anybody there, have increased assessed values. However, we also know that there are a lot of appeals taking place. So based on a ten-year average, we stuck with two and a half percent increase in our revenue, just because a ten-year average is less than two and a half percent, and a five-year average is a little over two and a half percent, so we're still right there in the middle. We also have to know that the CPI is only one point nine percent this year, and that puts a lid on the growth we can have in our revenue for local taxes. So two and a half percent is relatively safe. But once we get the values in June, the preliminary values, we will know better where we stand. And then in August, we will have the tax rate hearing and know exactly what our revenue will be, and then in September, we can do a budget amendment to bring this to what is actually going to be received, or expected to be received from property tax revenue. And here again is the picture, just like you were talking about, Kim Marie. Residential is the blue. That is sixty-six point nine two percent of our total assessed valuation. We have a tiny bit of agriculture, which is a little red line down underneath there that you can't see. Commercial is about sixteen percent of our assessed valuation, and personal property is about seventeen percent. So we are heavily dependent in our district on residential property taxes to fund our operations.
This is a chart that looks very different than some other districts.
That is correct. If you take our neighbors-
Our blue line is way bigger than hers.
Down on Fifty-two, Park Hill, North Kansas City, they have quite a bit more assessed valuation in commercial property, which pays at a higher rate, and there is in more revenue for them.
Helps them offset their residential.
I'm sorry?
And helps them offset the cost passed on to their residential.
Correct. They can have a, theoretically, they can have a lower tax rate because they gain more from their commercial property. That is correct.
Still spending less.
That is correct. This is just a picture we always like to show every year, a history of where we have been with our assessed valuation percentage of change. You can see last year, we were right at four point six percent. This year, the dash line represents our two and a half percent. I would anticipate that it will go up more in line with what we had last year, but that is, we're waiting on accounting to use that for a number or so. We will update this picture when we have more information. So we're going to move on now to our operating funds, budgeted expenditures. We had an eight point four million dollar increase in operating expenditures budgeted for the current, from the current year to next year. The percentages, you can see, do stay very similar to previous years, and that's always a good indicator that things are in line with previous years. Even though budget amount goes up, the percentage of the total stays relatively similar. And you can see by the graph that salaries and benefits are the biggest piece of our operating budget, and all total, they are about seventy-eight point six five percent of the operating budget. Last year, they were seventy-nine point one four.
And operating does not include money spent on capital, buildings, land-
That is correct.
...purchases of large capital or-
Debt service.
...money spent to pay interest on those kinds of-
That is correct.
...finance purchases.
Operating funds are the day-to-day operations of the district only. No outlay for buildings, no outlay for repairs, no outlay for paying off our debt.
Well.
That is the debt service base on the bonds. That is correct. It comprises the general fund, the teachers' fund, and the special, the student activity funds. Those three together make up the operating funds. The primary changes in the operating funds expenditures this year, which you just approved, were salaries and benefits, which we had a great increase for our compensation packages due to steps for the horizontal movement and the enhancements to all salary schedules. Purchased services also increased by two point three million, which is pretty substantial. And the reasons for those are an increase in RFPs for educational research services and inventory asset management services. We also had an increase for subservices. Children's services funds that were not spent this year from the grant were decreased in the current year budget and moved to next year's budget, and that's about nine hundred thousand dollars. So it's all accounted for and all is planned to be spent, and just because of the timing that we got it, it will carry over into next year's budget. So that was a big add to that two point three million dollars there. Some other things, we had some increases anticipated in contracted transportation for color services and for student trips, not color services, excuse me, at ALC. And then we had just small increases across every other budget for just typical increases in prices and increases due to student increases and needs for additional students. Any questions on those operating expenditures?
The purchase services again, that's about two point nine?
Two point three million.
What was that for again?
So nine hundred thousand of it was for children's services fund, almost a million of it that went unspent this year in the current year. We anticipate we'll have that much left to spend, so we reduced this year's budget and increased next year's budget. Contracted transportation services, RFP services for research and for inventory asset management. What else can I say? Percentage increase for-
I mean, purchase services is like, what's an offset? You're saving money somewhere because you're purchasing services, so you don't have to do those kind of things in-house?
It, yes.
So is that an offset in salaries? I mean, without that, we'd have to be hiring people?
Not necessarily. We, we can bring in people that we, for services we can't provide for. It could be some repairs and maintenance we can't provide for. It's people providing professional development for our teachers and other staff.
The mental health specialist piece-
Right.
...that's outside of the district.
Specialists that we don't provide services for. It could be for sending students to a program in Blue Springs for the blind or the hard of hearing that we don't. We accommodate them by sending them to a district that has the services that we have provided.
So those transportation costs and things like that are even rolled in? They're all rolled up into that umbrella?
They are. And anytime we have to hire, other than, for those type of things that we need to take students on field trips and we don't have a bus available, or sports, we don't have a bus available, we also contract those out, and those costs are increasing. If we don't have enough drivers, often we have to contract those out.
What's the percentage increase? That's the thing I'm missing here, because supplies, that's a pretty small-
Yeah, I think it's a constant fifteen percent increase this year. And what also, what you, why the supplies deep increase is so small?
The point is, we're not doubling the budget.
Yes.
No, no. So the supply budget is so small because we took a lot of OER expenditures that were budgeted in previous years for textbooks and moved them into purchase services because we're bringing people in to train for PD and things like that. In the prior years, they'd been put in, in textbooks, so supplies. So we've shifted things from supplies to purchase services. So it's a healthy increase, but overall, the whole budget overall increased five hundred thousand dollars, so we're not-
Re-classified.
Right. Exactly. Re-classified.
Cindy, does purchase services include Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
It does. And we saw a pretty big uptake for that last year. So it's, it has a little bit of an increase this year built in, but it's not as large as it was last year.
So that alone makes up about sixty percent of that purchase services? Well, that's the increase. That's just the increase over-
Those are just the increases?
That's not the total.
Right. Right. Aren't your project.
Cindy, help me understand. I'm looking at this salaries and benefits, and I think you previously had spoken to it, but I didn't quite get it. What percentage did we spend more this year than, or we will spend this year compared to last year?
Purchase services, you said?
Or for salaries and benefits?
The percentages, last year are, the current year, our percentage spend on salaries and benefits is seventy-nine. This year, FY twenty, next year, this budget we're talking about, will be seventy-eight point six five. Very minimal change. And it went down probably because purchase services went up as they increased the budget as a whole.
Back to Chelsea.
Any other questions? Okay. So this shows our operating trend percentages, operating fund balance percentage trends, excuse me. We are projecting to end the current year at twenty-six point eight nine. With the larger spend, you'll see we're closing the gap on the expenditures versus revenues for the budgeted FY twenty year. That will bring the fund balance down to a projected twenty-three point seven four. As a board, your goal is falling somewhere between eighteen to twenty-two percent, landing hopefully more on the twenty percent range. But you will see down at twenty-three, twenty-four, we dip down below eighteen percent, but keep in mind, we project conservatively, and the growth for AV isn't in here like it will most likely end up. So seeing a seventeen percent there does not concern me at this point. Is it something to be aware of? Absolutely. Something to monitor? Absolutely. But we are, we want that fund balance back down because we want people to be using that money for what we need and paying staff for what we need and having enough left over to meet our demands in October, November, when the revenue is being, is low and coming in. So the trajectory is where we see it every year, and we always tend to bump up higher at the end of the year than we projected. So this does not bother me at this point, but it is something to watch. We'll talk, I'm happy you were there, about the other funds now. As Mr. Evans indicated, operating funds are general fund, teacher fund, and student activity funds. The other funds are the debt service fund, the capital fund, and the bond fund. Debt service fund is solely for the retirement of bonded indebtedness, and the revenue comes from local tax support and interest income. So you will see that we, at this point, our revenues are exceeding our expenditures, so we will be looking to using some of that excess debt service fund to pay off debt quicker. We have a couple of bonded indebtedness pieces that we are specifically looking at that have balances that would be very easy to pay off, and there would be no penalty for paying them off. So because our levy and debt service is healthy, that will enable us to look at doing that and getting that balance back down, that we don't want to go that balance too much. So that's something we most likely will be bringing to you in the future to consider. Capital projects fund, this is very small, I know it's hard to read, but the capital project list was rolled out this past week, I believe, to all district leaders. There were over seven hundred items on our capital request list. So in an effort to try to address more of those requests, we have upped the spend a little bit in the capital projects fund to meet the needs of those requests a little faster, because we have a healthy balance there as well. And this is where they will be spent this year. And you can see that our beginning balance there at the end of this year is around eleven point three million dollars. Our revenue is for the thirty-six cent levy. That goes to pay for the technology leases. And our expenditures are proposed to be thirteen million, which is an increase in what we spent this year. And we'll transfer in five million to meet some of those expenditures that bring that estimated fund balance down to eight and a half million. And Mr. Anderson has a plan to spend those down at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four. We would like to come up to a balance of about two and a half million dollars, which is a healthy reserve to pay for the rainy day things that we don't expect. is a healthy reserve to pay for the rainy day things that we don't expect. But we see if revenues continue to grow, we will be able to continue to transfer money in and work on some of that list to keep rolling it down to meet the capital requests of the buildings and departments.
We're going to do things, we're going to keep including roofing.
Roof leaking.
Boilers.
Things you don't anticipate that could totally happen. It's not necessarily covered by insurance. Any other repairs or maintenance buses that break down that we have to replace that can't be fixed? What happened?
Abatement.
Yes, abatement, absolutely. That's where having that healthy fund comes in heavy. Unexpected. And the last is our bond fund, and this was the 2018 bond. We have been slow in spending it, some from weather and other delays, but we are hoping we'll get most of it spent this year. That's probably a little aggressive. I really think we'll have some left over to pay off after FY '20 is over just because of the rate that things are moving and it won't stop raining and so we have three years to pay it off, but I think we'll get that. So here is the projection for all funds. Thank you.
Since you're drinking, now you've paused long enough on the answer. If you go back to that last page there.
That one?
Yeah, let's say we don't, we do get that spent or we don't, or bids come in under, those are dollars that we can't transfer, move from one fund to another or not?
We cannot transfer.
You would have to add projects or?
We need to add projects. You can theoretically use that excess to pay down the bond?
That's what I'm wondering.
You can.
Yeah.
But.
But you wouldn't have to transfer funds to do that?
No.
Okay. So that answered my question.
We're going to spend it all.
I figured Steve would be over there going, yeah, we're going to spend it all.
Well, and typically, the language of the bond that voters voted on leaves us room to add projects.
Right, as necessary to add coordination.
And I think typically as well, the pack, the bond package, there are always extras that we take out or things that we take out because they've come in higher than we wanted to have for. So it's never been a problem to spend it all.
Yeah, I understand. I agree. Because I know you guys do a lot of drug dealing.
The other piece is keep in mind, the list of projects we identified and then went through the prioritization process and those alternates. And if we wanted to pull an alternate project up, we certainly could. So I think we did, we've done that.
The list of projects is very long.
It's pretty extensive and we've done that the last couple of bond issues. So that's not out of the norm, should we like to.
So here is the revenue projection all put together. So you can see that the projected revenue budget for all funds, as I indicated earlier, is only projected to increase a little over $500,000. It's very similar to what last year's budget is. You just see shifts in where the revenue comes from. '17, '18, you saw other revenue, which was when we got bond proceeds. So that's the, that accounts for the high amount of revenue in 2017, '18, and it's more back down to normal in '19 and '20. Very similar to the last year. And then for budgeted expenditures, we did increase this year from last year, and most of that is due to spending the bond funds. Now, you will see under capital projects, the $47 million expenditure includes all capital and bond expenditures. So we got it in '17, '18 on the previous slide, we're spending it down hopefully in '19, '20 on this side. And finally, here's the general budget summary. This puts the same information in a different light. You will see David highlighted there in the three columns, the operating funds. That's the funds we talk about the most because that's what keeps the lights on and the salaries being paid. You will see that a stable budget is presented. That means revenues exceed expenditures in the operating funds, which that is our goal every year. We do not want a deficit spend in the operating fund. And this just presents where we are going to be anticipated at the end of this year versus where we're going to be anticipated at the end of next year according to the budget that has been presented in draft form for tonight.
Questions for Cindy?
So we have another month. Let this resonate with you. Please let me know if you have questions. I know already, it's like a car, we drove it off a lot and it's out of date already.
As a bay 15.
Uh-huh, yes. So my plan is unless something extremely large happens to change the numbers, we're going to let it set as it is. Nothing, nothing has come to my attention that would change the numbers in totality enough to have to flow through the whole book until we do a budget amendment in September, unless you prefer otherwise.
And we approve this next month or we move the meeting to the way for, don't need to?
We haven't done that in a couple of years now, as far as moving the June meeting schedule.
Yes, we are accommodating. We've kind of changed the way we do things in the business office to be able to function a little better through June without moving that coordination. And I think the process can just be more information. So more flexible.
The only other, only other thing I would share, and this was in part as we were walking through the legislative session in terms of the state economic outlook, and we kind of weathered that and saw the full funding of the formula through the legislature, but still kind of keeping apprised of what the market and economic outlook looks like, whether it's connecting with bankers or financial, you know, individuals, some of our lobbyists as well that present or share out economic forecasts, just being mindful of that because all of that has implications on that projections document as we look to that three to five year outlook and what degree of fund balance we carry. So as we pull together.
Both purchased services, we talked about a little bit earlier. The first one is for a scanning project that really, we've done a couple sections of scanning work over the past few years. This basically completes that work. It takes all of the documentation that's held for a required period of time throughout the district and it will scan it and retain that and then set up a program or a system so that we can continue to handle that digitally as we go forward in the future. As mentioned there, this was an RFP, we put out a proposal, we only received one proposal on this one and it is with American Micro, so that'll be back in front of you next month. If you have any questions between now and then feel free to give us a call. And then the next one is with the vendors transported. We put out an RFP, I think we targeted at least six firms that kind of play in this space. We received three bids, interviewed all of them, and selected transportant as the preferred vendor. And this really takes us, I think, to that next step in terms of how we organize everything in and around transportation and it pulls in and coordinates the work between TransFinder and the routing software and the camera systems and really kind of brings all of that wholesale together. We have a couple other vendors that we currently use that this will allow us to consolidate that work and I think also allows to take some steps into areas that we've not been really happy with some of our performances thus far. So it's an upgrade. There's a lot of detail to this, I'd be happy to answer questions, but for the sake of time, I'll kind of leave it at that. And certainly if any time between now and next meeting, if you have questions, we can kind of run through the details from there.
I just have one clarification. So on that list of things that'll be provided, one of them is student access to Wi-Fi on the bus.
Yes.
But as I read through it, it sounded like that is kind of a side benefit, but the Wi-Fi is needed for all of those systems to work in real time?
Correct.
It wasn't that we wanted to get students Wi-Fi on the bus, which is...
It's an added benefit, but it's not the main driver, right?
It's not the main driver, right.
It really does allow for, and that's probably one of the greater benefits to this, it allows for real-time access to camera systems on the buses by the administrators at the buildings as well as transportation.
I don't want anyone to misinterpret that we're spending a lot of money to try to give students Wi-Fi access.
Wi-Fi, yeah.
Other questions on those two items? So those will come back to you for final consideration next month. The next item is one we wanted to provide a little bit more information on as we've walked through a fairly new arrangement relationship with Kelly Services, so wanted to turn it to Dr. Vogelr, to provide some overview of that.
Thank you. What's attached there is the agreement for a renewal with a price increase for substitute teachers and for substitute nurses, including nurse long-term rate, and that is mainly around competitiveness with the other clients and Kelly. Also included, a PowerPoint that was presented to Team Liberty in April, I've updated the slides, thanks to Cindy for updating the financial slides to take into account the totality of April. We're still in the month of May, so I don't have the May data on there, but that gives you an updated snapshot of what we shared. On that, in particular, we do a year-by-year comparison of fill rates while we were at the helm and then when we handed it over to Kelly Services. In a nutshell, up through the month of April, the fill rate's 93.9%, so just shy of 94%. Last year was 91.6%. It was a little higher prior to that, but a lot of that had to do with economic drivers. The unemployment rate is seeing historic lows and that makes it hard to fill a subpool, whether we're doing it in-house or someone else is doing it outside. I do want to point out, though, that the rate, the 93.3% fill rate, has pulled down by numbers in August and September. And you recall that the beginning of the year, we awarded the contract to Kelly with a month to get rolling and it takes about five months for them to back recruit to get on there, and so we saw low rates. If you extract out that August and September period of time, then the fill rate jumps from just shy of 94 to 94.8 or almost 95%. You see the other months drop down on that slide and that's just because historically August and September have been easy months to fill subrates, the beginning of school years. So I think the slide four on what's attached there is more indicative of what you would tend to see with Kelly Services once those beginning glitches in the first two months of the school year were reconciled. The last slide in that slide deck talks about the financials of it, and that's a five-year trend that Cindy pulled. You see the numbers steadily go up and they go up primarily because the demand has increased, but the last couple years and probably three-year trend, you get fairly close to apples-to-apples comparison because we were adding full-time, long-term subs to try to shore up the fill rate. Those have all gone away as we've handed the reins over to Kelly Services. The spend right now is around, you know, $48,000 more than what it was two years ago and probably about, what, $90-plus thousand more than last year's expenditures. Both though under $100,000 more than our expenditures and I think we were initially anticipating about a quarter of a million more in spend because of the markup that's typical for outsourcing those services. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have regarding Kelly Services and the conversations we've been having in Team Liberty.
Any questions for Dr. Vogel?
What's Team Liberty's take on Kelly Services?
A high degree of frustration in August and September, but since then, it's been a complete turnaround. And of course, they understand the dilemma with awarding the contract and only having a month to backfill that demand. Because it tapered out after that, obviously, a lot of that turned around and then we got to a place where Kelly Services was outperforming. In fact, that slide deck shows you month by month, once those first two months were out of the way, the incentives that Kelly built in, it shows the comparisons after that and they're all very, very attractive, very competitive. Obviously, anything less than 100% fill rate is always a point of frustration because it means that somewhere a para or an administrative assistant or a classroom teacher position didn't get picked up and then somebody has to provide that coverage. So, yeah, mixed bag at times. I think on the whole, though, they see this as a good thing. They certainly were supportive of renewing it for next year, recognizing that if we were to deviate from it, the best time to make that decision is around mid-year so that if you award that contract to another company, you're not putting them in a situation where they have one month to try to recruit.
Any questions on that? This is after approving the mark...
The markup, correct. And all the rates are constant except for the teacher rate up by $5 and the nurse rate is up from 1649 to what's posted there and then the long-term rate up from 2441, that's the current amount to what's posted. Those are the changes and that's really to make it commensurate with what the surrounding districts are doing in those two arenas to hopefully create incentives for people to choose Liberty Public Schools over a neighboring school system.
I move the board to approve the Kelly Services renewal contract. Questions? Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy? Question, please.
Is there any business to report to administration? Sure, 10.01. First up is academic services report. Dr. Heidi.
You'll see in your agenda tonight, the academic service report and along with college and career readiness and community partners, program evaluation. We're very grateful to Colleen Jones, who's the director of this program, and in there would like to just point out some of the highlights that I hope you notice, the amount of internship opportunities for students, the increase in shadowship, real-world learning experiences that are provided through that department such as future finance, medical careers night, women in engineering, shadow search day, just to name a few, because there's a lot more than that. We're really grateful for what she's doing and continue to have plans to grow and expand that program as we think about really blowing up especially internship opportunities for students and real-world learning experiences for them. And so, very much thankful to Colleen Jones in partnership with Dr. Julian Moore as they continue to think especially about the secondary program and what that's going to look like in the future. In the academic service report, I just wanted to highlight a few areas. Early college, we have met our initial request of, we were hoping for about 20, and it looks like we have just about 20 entering that program. So Dr. Moore was able to accompany those 20 students to MCC this week on Monday as they started the initial process of getting enrolled in college classes for the fall. And so, really excited about that opportunity, looking forward to partnering with students and families as that and really appreciate you being able to support that program and thinking about how we continue to open doors for kids and give them opportunities that didn't exist before. We're happy that MAP and EOC testing is now coming to a close, closed, we hope. And then also just wanted to give a huge shout-out to every one of our schools for the award ceremonies that they're conducting right now, their concerts, the amazing fine arts program that we have throughout Liberty Public Schools, and two incredibly successful graduations where we were able to celebrate the graduating classes from both Liberty High School and Liberty North and the, I think it just culminates the amount of work and effort and pouring and Deb Kaywood said it so well, you know, how do we pour into our students and offer them a lot of love and they give back to us far more than we can ever give. So, that's it for us tonight. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Heidi? Okay. Thank you.
That will go off in a second. There you go. Next up, finance report, 10.4, no, 10.02, Sullivan's.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker. I have three donations to present to you tonight. An anonymous monetary donation made to Manor Hill in the amount of $3,800 to be applied to lunch accounts that have negative balances. A monetary donation by Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City in the amount of $4,000 for district use. And a monetary donation made to LHS, Liberty High School Technology Student Association, by Hawthorne Bank in the amount of $1,200 to cover lodging for one night of the TSA National Conference in National Harbor, Maryland. We always appreciate the generosity of our community in making donations to our programs. The other things I'd like to highlight on my report and make mention of, audit finance committee meeting, we have two seats that will be vacated at the end of June. We have currently three applications that have been submitted for those seats, one of which is an incumbent. You can find an application on the district website under the finance homepage, or if you know of anyone that you would like to recommend to apply, encourage them to do so. For the two non-incumbents, they would be asked to show up for interviews at the next board meeting on the 18th so that you can talk with them. The incumbent will be out of town, so we'll make arrangements to work with him if he so chooses to keep his name in the ring. The audit finance committee also was provided the budget document preliminarily to review and then they will meet again on the 17th to go over the final document and bring any comments to you. That's all I have for you tonight.
Did you say there was an application deadline?
I believe it's June 1st.
And then coordinate, prior to June 1st?
Right.
All right. Thank you, Cindy.
The June 17th, is that a call-in or is that a physical?
That's a physical meeting. Here, 5:30.
Thank you.
Questions for Cindy? 10.03, then, Dr. Vogelr, Human Resources.
Thank you. We're wrapping up the year. Obviously, our hiring season is still in flux. We're about 85% of the way there, even from what was reported, it's changed a little bit. We've gotten some additional resignation letters in and so those are posted, but basically about 85% of the way filled. It's typical for this time of year and we'll have some fill in the early summer months as well, so that's progressing nicely. And then I want to also just again thank Mr. Rosecrans and also Dr. Sehorn for co-chairing this Grow Your Own Teacher inaugural year and publicly thank the steering committee, Dr. Camp, Ms. Herman, Dr. Kirth, and Mr. Tate. They poured themselves really into a process that when you started out and just didn't know exactly what it would entail, the work involved, the recruiting, the reaching out, working through EIP, I mean, all of that, I really could not give justice to just how hard they were. I think the fruit of that labor is really exciting and I look forward to where it will be in four years when they come back. When I saw Deb Kaywood speaking there, it kind of gave me a glimpse of where maybe one of these four might be in 30 years behind the microphone celebrating this incredible profession. So thank you again for believing in that vision, for committing to it and standing behind it, and I look forward to continue to celebrate the results of the program. Got other things included in the report, if you have any questions, I'd be delighted to speak to those.
10.04, then, operations, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Two items I'd highlight tonight. First, capital plan. We sent this out, gave you all an overview of this last week, Friday, that kind of detailed, kind of broke down the various work and projects. I did want to just take a minute and thank, there's so many people that are involved in that process. It's very deliberative and collaborative and, you know, in terms of involving all the folks at the building level and then the team that spends a lot of time holding up the my office, kind of working through is the prioritization process, Steve Aldrich, Jason Brighten, Trey Kotscher, and then, of course, working very closely with Cindy and her folks and kind of lining everything up as it relates to budget. So, really appreciate it's a lot of time spent, but I think it's a good process and effort. Just real quick, over $8 million worth of work scheduled for the upcoming year, about 180 projects, estimated approximately 180 projects. The big four projects that we're going to see this year were, the Shoal Creek Elementary office area is going to be remodeled to accommodate some staffing needs there and they have a lot of extra space that they could repurpose. Liberty Middle School office is seeing some work, so this is all capital, not bond, just as a reminder. So Liberty Middle School office is going to see some work, the expansion of the nurses' space there. The DAC, the atrium area, as you walked in, you saw several towels out in the window area. We have long struggled battling how best to remediate that issue and the only answer is to take it out and put in a storefront. So it's going to look different here this time next year, if not sooner, but that's going to be a big project as well. And the fourth one is the Liberty High School Oxygen Repurpose Project, we're moving the weight systems up to the oxygen and kind of redesigning some of that space and giving wrestling a little bit more room down in the lower level. So those are the four big projects. Of course, there's a lot of HVAC work and roofing work and then a whole series of other equipment and so on and so forth. So that's the one item. The second, just a quick construction update, I get a lot of questions because of the rain. On schedule right now, we're still feeling pretty confident to meet those deadlines. We obviously built in some days for rain, we also built in some budget for overtime as might be necessary, so we're feeling like we're still in pretty good shape. Also received quite a few questions about Liberty High School because if you're back there, that seems to be going a little more slowly, but that's because of the nature of the design of that building. We're waiting for wall systems to come in and so they're going to pour the foundations and footings here in June, just ahead of when the wall systems come in, so that'll snap together pretty quickly and kind of put north and Liberty High, they look very different now, but in two months they'll look kind of like they're on the same trajectory. So that's, construction-wise, pretty good. I guess budget, that'd be the other main focus area. We have one last group of bids that are, we're receiving those on Thursday, but it's a really small item, I think we're projecting about $80,000 for that. Beyond that, we are very close to that $49 million overall budget number for all those projects, so we've been watching that very closely, folding in alternates along the way. Of course, as I mentioned before, we will have some interest earned on some of those dollars that have been put aside, and then we also are closely managing contingency and I think we'll see some savings there. So right now, we feel really good both schedule and budget-wise where all that work is at. That'd be have to take any questions?
Questions for Mr. Anderson? 10.05, then, as far as superintendent's report, a couple items to add to my report. First of all, as Dr. Heidi shared, congratulations to the class of 2019. Appreciate Dr. Adams and Dr. Jacobs and their teams and putting on some great ceremonies as well as all of you from the board that were able to participate. We do have with us this evening a graduate from the class of 2016 from Liberty North High School. You might recognize Ms. Claire Rose in the back. Reason why you might recognize her is when she was a Liberty North High School Eagle, she was on student council and came to multiple school board meetings, so you've probably signed her paperwork before. She is a student, are you a junior now, Claire?
I'm going to be a senior.
Going to be a senior at Auburn, correct? And is focused in public relations and so has come back to Liberty, just, you've been here a couple weeks now, and is doing an internship with our communications and marketing department. So, I apologize you have to work for Dallas. No, all joking aside, we're glad to have you. She's already helped us out with retirement celebrations and I know that Dallas and her have been sharing ideas and so we're glad to have her with us for a portion of her summer, so welcome back to the board meeting.
From Liberty North Eagle to War Eagle.
There you go. Couple other items as far as wrapping up the school year, end of school, obviously for all of our campuses with the exception of Epic is coming up and then Epic will follow a couple weeks later in June, start of summer school is just around the corner. We did have the end of the legislative session of which several things were successfully defeated, but then what we did notice was an omnibus bill that kind of got bundled up under House Bill 604. House Bill 604 is actually a school turnaround act, but then it got about 14 amendments added on to that particular bill. Anything from foundation formula to externships, school calendar, A-plus scholarships, there are a lot of items that were tacked on to that. One of the things that will be going toward the governor's office is consideration for school calendar and start dates and that districts would not be permitted to start school any earlier than 14 days prior to Labor Day, which seems, you know, reasonable, but at the same time, when you have campuses like Epic Elementary that start that much earlier than the rest of our schools, it is a little bit problematic. So we'll be providing a little bit of feedback to the governor's office and around that and really advocating for autonomy at the local level. And so, we're still in the process of unpacking the legislative session and all of its implications, really focusing on House Bill 604 and everything that that entails. Of course, we'll see where that takes us in terms of the governor's next steps. In addition to that, back on May 6th, had the opportunity to participate in the Commissioner's Education Policy Committee in Columbia, in which about 20 education from K-12 and higher ed as well as business partner, industry leaders, politicians gathered together to kind of think through the next iteration of M6 policy considerations in moving our state forward. At this first convening, we focused on three areas, workforce development, early learning, future preparation, recruitment, and retention. We're going to meet again in June on the 19th and we'll be tackling the topics of increasing access and rethinking school, data utilization, rethinking accountability system, with recommendations being developed in each of these six areas to further inform M6 as well as also steer the work of DESI and legislative policy considerations as it relates to education. So we're going to continue to engage in that. Also want to point out that that is being facilitated in collaboration with a couple of groups, obviously DESI, higher ed from the state of Missouri, but also the Council of Chief State School Officers, which works a lot with governors across states, across the nation in terms of education space. Also collaborating with the Hunt Institute in terms of facilitation and then the Ewing, Marion Kaufman Foundation from right here in Kansas City. So, I've enjoyed being part of those meetings and hopefully we'll continue to move our state forward in some innovative work that we're already embarking on in Liberty Public Schools. Last thing that I wanted to share is we met for three days earlier this month with our consultant from GND and Associates, continuing the work of our strategic planning process. Currently, we're working on draft documents of a vivid vision or a vision narrative, vision statements that then result in action plans as well as a graduate profile. So we're working on four draft pieces, the vivid vision, vision statements, action plan, as well as graduate profile. When we pulled all of our work together, we ended up with about 60-plus action plans to which the consultant said, "That's way too many, you've got to pare that down to about 22." I think we're right at about 27. So we're continuing to refine, but that really is changing our mindset and how we're approaching strategic planning and look forward to sharing that work with the board at our upcoming retreat. The only other thing I would mention, and we will not meet prior to this taking place, instead, we'll meet in June and it will already have occurred, and that is the obliteration and destruction and annihilation of the bridge on I-35 and 152. So, I'm not sure what that's going to look like on May 31st. I expect big things and explosion fireworks, I may be let down, but nonetheless, just to remind everybody that Missouri Department of Transportation and the city of Liberty have been prepping for this for some time and trying to message out, we've messaged it out multiple times. There will be about a 58-hour window beginning on May 31st of which I-35 will be shut down as my understanding, if that commences. And then as we look to the duration, it's lasting through probably the first part of September is what we anticipate as we're told by MoDOT, and hopefully it will be as little as a disruption as possible, but we'll all have to kind of find alternate routes, so.
I think they have done a good job.
Absolutely.
So far, I mean, it's been smoothly.
Yeah. In talking with folks at the city, they still get questions as to, okay, what's going on? People that will travel throughout the city or just have not been paying attention are asking what's going on with all the constructions, so.
How have they missed it?
Exactly. They may already start planning.
The ramp's going up and down the ramp.
Yeah, they'll be doing that for some time.
It's not shut down, it's the traffic.
It'll go up and over.
Up the ramp and down the ramp.
Okay. That concludes the items that I had for my superintendent's report.
This is the reading dates. We've got very few left in our board year. We've got our retreat on board. We have a handful going to the leadership summit, which we will get governance board. We need to check all the boxes for MSBA this year.
Second, your amendment.
And then we have our junior, and I believe it's a retreat, I believe, that I was really setting, so. Brings us to 12.01, we have an agenda to point our TIF commission or the TIF.
I think Nick expressed a desire to do it, so I'm just going to nominate him and listen to Bill Strong.
And he and Stephen Anderson.
And he's not here, so let's have him.
He's not here, so he can't say no.
Good point.
Oh, yeah, he's interested.
I'm sure he is.
So I move the Board of Education of the Liberty School District herein, approve the appointments of Nick Bartlow and Stephen Anderson to represent the district on the tax increment financing or TIF commissions of Kansas City, Missouri and Liberty, Missouri in all matters relating to TIF plans, TIF plan areas, TIF projects, and all amendments thereto which affect in part or in whole areas within the boundaries of the district. Said appointments are for one year from the date of appointment.
Second.
Scott?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Any remarks?
I have a remark. I always have one. I just wanted to, again, recognize the work of Team Liberty in struggling through the compensation. compensation recommendation. I think when people see it at home, it looks like we all say, "Oh, yes, looks good," and move on, but in reality, we know that there are a team of teachers and support staff and people who are really close to that process who spend a lot of time thinking what's best and digging deep into all the options. By the time we get it, this is our second. It's a really easy decision. Thank you.
Yeah, they'll pass that on. They'll appreciate that. I'm going for your turn.
Second.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Ashen Kears.